Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this June 14th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those who are willing and able, I'll invite you to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, thank you for your goodness as we approach Father's Day. We ask a special blessing on all fathers. Guide us as fathers to be good role models and loving to our children. Help us to lead in a way that is pleasing unto you. May we take time to celebrate and honor the men who have made a positive impact on our lives. We ask for your wisdom in the business presented before us today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've added item 11.02, which is an update on the City of Tallahassee Water Works Building, and we have deleted your sinking fund commission meeting, item 8.01.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any citizens to be heard on agendated items?
Mayor, we have one speaker on agendated items. That is Richard Dusenberry. He is speaking on item 1204, and that item is introduction of ordinance.
Great. Mr. Dusenberry?
My name is Richard Dusenberry. I live at 439 West Georgia. I'm glad I got here on time. This is a quick start. This, I really appreciate planning's, the planning department's effort to try to do something nice. But what this is to me is it shows that the way planning reviews things, we really have got to have this Frenchtown in 50, and we've got to get it included in the, in the code itself. Here's the deal. The Strong Jones Funeral Home sold their current property. It's CU 45 property. Of course, they reap the benefits of the value of this property, and I hope they made a ton of money. They want to stay in Frenchtown, and they have found another property which is on Brevard Street. That property is zoned CU 26, and mortuaries are not allowed in CU 26. So now from this point, you start getting kind of weird, because what has been recommended to you, you know, this is not just a description of the situation. I've described the situation. But it's, they are recommending to you that CU 26 be changed for the entire city so that mortuaries are allowed. And there are little, the grease in this is that there's a condition that you have to have a location within CU 26 that has a certain arterial ranking, which Brevard has. So they're saying it's not going to affect very many people in other CU 26 areas. The other alternative, as they see it, is to rezone this as CU 45, which of course opens it up to different kinds of development. Now, what we're thinking is that since we've lost McComb as some kind of a commercial center, that there's a potential that Brevard would become it, and we need to then kind of control Brevard so it doesn't just become a runway between Tennessee, shortcut from Tennessee to Monroe. And none of that is taken into account, and this is treated in a very, you know, a high-level way. And I don't have a recommendation for you. I don't know, I don't know what should be done here. But I do know that this shows you that if Frenchtown is going to survive, we've got to have the Frenchtown in 50. And it can't just be another one of these, you know, I wish kind of projects like we've had in 2000, and I've forgotten when the earlier one was, 87 or so, I guess. It's got to be in the code so that when the planning people review something, they know what the rules are in Frenchtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dusenberry. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Richardson followed by Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Dusenberry, I can appreciate your position, and I thank you for all that you have done for the Frenchtown area. But, but what you have to understand is Strong and Jones Funeral Home has been in that area since 1947. They, they have been a stalwart in the Frenchtown community, providing services to that community for all those, all of those decades. They have had an opportunity to make some money, sure, and they sold their property, but they're still committed to the Frenchtown area. And I'm sure they're not going to do anything that will not be in the best interest of Frenchtown, and that is keeping a, a business, a longstanding business in that community that hires people from the community, that provides a service, that maybe some families wouldn't otherwise be able to get but for the fact that they have a presence in that community. And so I, I don't want to besmirch the good name and reputation of Strong and Jones Funeral Home because of what they have decided to do, because they're doing it with the best interest of the Frenchtown community at heart, where they have been, like I said, since 1947.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Yes. Well, I would just like to ask Mr. Dusenberry, out of those two choices, which one of those he prefers? I mean, and the main reason I'm interested is that if there's anybody else from Frenchtown, I'd like to hear from them too, but besides his wife, she can come up and say.
I'm, I'm a carpetbagger. I've lived in Frenchtown 11 years now. I'm well, I hope that you don't think that I besmirch Strong Jones.
No, no, we just want the answer to the question.
The, I, I don't know what the answer is. I know that you don't believe this, but for the most part, when I come to talk to you, I'm just telling you what everybody in Frenchtown knows to be true. And I'm not faulting the planners. They're just dealing with something that does not work for Frenchtown. And it's a kind of an object lesson in why we need Frenchtown in 50. We really need to have some definition of the uses so that they're graduated from the towers down to the residences, and Frenchtown can survive as a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. It's been a tremendous experience to live there. I don't know which one of these two is preferable.
Well, the third one would be that Strong Jones leaves, and I don't think that you want that.
Well, I mean, there's, another alternative is that they've, they've reaped the, the value of selling CU 45 property. Presumably, they could go shopping in CU 45 property. You know, I mean.
Well, that would mean leaving Frenchtown. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
No other speakers on agendated items, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we're now at the point of the meeting of consent.
Move consent.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye? Those, is that everybody? Unanimous? All in favor? Motion, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Sorry. Commissioners, we're now at 1101 Planning Commission Appointment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the appointment to the Planning Commission. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Gilziffer, 1102.
Mayor and Commissioners, you all may have heard that there was money put in the budget for historical grants, but not quite enough. We were, I think, number 25 on the list, and they were able to fund the top 15. So while we were able to get $50,000 to parse to do some very, very minor things, we were not part of the larger grant application that we wanted, which is $500,000, of which the CRA had allocated $250,000 for a match. So having said that, there are a couple of different routes, and I'll try to do this as best I can, or maybe we just don't do anything. But we could apply again for the grant next year, but we have to do that by tomorrow. Tomorrow's the deadline in order to be considered for the, anything next year, and then we have to go through the process all over again. And, and there's no guarantee that we'll be on the top list again, but probably since many, many in, in front of us were awarded, there's a pretty good chance. But like I said, there are no guarantees. Or, which I'm going to recommend, and it, it, it comes after a lot of thought towards this building, since I've been involved with it a long time. Some of you are probably aware, I was part of the group that came before this commission. It seems like it was probably 10 or 12 years ago, maybe 13, to get moneyed from the City Commission to stabilize it, where some windows were put in and the structure was stabilized. And then, of course, the recession hit. But something needs to happen with this building because it's a fabulous structure. It is. And it has great historical relevance to us. But there are a couple of different routes we could go. We could renovate it. We could spend a lot of money, of which we don't know how much that is. And then we could lease it to somebody. I don't think I want to do that right now. I think there's some issues with that. Or we could sell the building and put some really significant restrictions on it from a historical standpoint, as far as anything being done to it, we'd have to approve in an RFP process, which I think has great merit. Or we could do absolutely nothing, and the building can continue to sit as it is. My recommendation is going to be, in fact, I'm going to make a motion that we ask staff to develop an RFP that we can consider at a future meeting, to go out and get some bids back for not only a price, but also what they would conceivably do with this facility. That would be my recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Commissioners. Are there any questions? Just want to add, Commissioner, I think, having an overlay and giving some really clear instruction over what ultimately can happen there, especially given the significant public investment and development that is anticipated, will be very, very important. It's part of why the Commission, a while ago, decided to retain our original power plant. And, and clearly there, the difference there is that it was in the center of the park. In this case, it's on the periphery, but still gets the benefit from the investments made there. So with your comments to that effect included in the, in the motion, in full support.
Yeah, I think, if, I think the, the electric building was in the center, and we all wanted it renovated, and we also wanted for a significant public use. I don't know if that's going to happen with this. But we want it renovated, and we wanted to maintain its historical relevance, and we wanted to bring it back to what it appeared to be, and there's so much value there. This gives us the opportunity to hopefully make it happen.
Agreed. Now, what happens with the $50,000, by the way? Are we able to receive that, or would we reject it?
Sir, I don't believe we can keep it if it.
The only way we can keep it is if it remains in public hands.
That's correct.
Got it. Commissioners, any other, Commissioner Miller?
Well, I think that when we discussed this before, wasn't that our plan, that if we didn't get the grant, we were going to put it up for sale? So, and I, I just wanted to reinforce Commissioner Ziffer's comments on the, and Commissioner Gillon too, on the, on the electric building, because people were entering and exiting. I mean, it was an attractive nuisance. People had access. This building's pretty much secure. People are not getting into it all the time. And so the threat that it poses, plus it's not as high-profile to the park, and so the threat that the other building posed to the public is a nuisance and adds a liability to the city, actually, was much, much greater. This, though, you know, I think it's pretty secure. I want to shout out the KCCI Catalyst Class because they have done such a phenomenal job with this. And I'm sure that, that they would like to be part of that conversation as to what we, that RFP that we put out.
Got it. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner. City Attorney, we're now at introduction of ordinances.
We have seven ordinances to be introduced tonight, so please bear with me. Item number 12.01 is ordinance number 17-0-22. It is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee-Lawn County Comprehensive Plan. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for June 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM in these chambers of the City of Tallahassee. Item number 12.02 is ordinance 17-0-23. It's an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida relating to accessory dwelling units, amending definition of accessory dwelling, dwelling units contained in section 1-2 of the Land Development Code, amending section 10-280.7 concerning accessory dwelling units, amending section 10-412 concerning accessory uses. The first and only public hearing for this proposed ordinance will be scheduled June 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM at the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers. Item dash number 12.03 is ordinance 17-0-24. It's an ordinance, City of Tallahassee, amending Tallahassee Land Development Code to allow, to allow drive-through facilities as a permitted use in the urban pedestrian dash one zoning district outside the multimodal transportation district if additional urban design criteria are met. It amends section 10-284 to add additional requirements through drive, for drive-through facilities. The first of two public hearings on this ordinance is scheduled for June 28 at 6:00 PM in these chambers, City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers. The second and final public hearing will be scheduled for July 19 at 6:00 PM in these chambers also. Moving on to item number 12.04, it's ordinance 17-0-30. It's an ordinance, City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending chapter 10 zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code. It adds mortuaries in the central urban dash 26 zoning district if additional locational standards are met. The first of two public hearings scheduled for this proposed ordinance will be on June 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Committee, Commission Chambers. The second and final public hearing on this ordinance will be scheduled for July 19 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers. Item number 12.05 is ordinance number 17-Z-12. It's an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end light industrial district on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission. This ordinance, the first and only public hearing, will be held on June 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Committee, Commission Chambers. Item number 12.06, it's ordinance number 17-Z-20. It's an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end commercial parkway, that is CP, on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for this proposed ordinance on June 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM on the, in the City Commission Chambers. Finally, item number 12.07 is ordinance number 17-Z-25. The first of two public hearings is scheduled on June 28 at 6:00 PM in these chambers, and the second and final public hearing is scheduled on July 19 at 6:00 PM in the City Commission Chambers. The title of this final ordinance, or proposed ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end office residential two and general commercial, that is C2, on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee. Mayor, I'd ask that items number 12.01 through 12.07 be deemed to be admitted and introduced.
Great. Without objection, please show those items introduced. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.01. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, items, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, 13.01 and 13.02 involve FDOT grant-funded sidewalk projects. These projects reflect the city's positive relationship with DOT and the mayor's leadership and meeting with them, and are consistent with your direction to leverage grant funding to enhance the city's infrastructure. Altogether, there are five new sidewalks planned, representing nearly $2 million in investment. I would ask that you vote separately on items 13.01 and 13.02, and Steve Schaefer's here to provide you with a brief overview.
I'll move 1301.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Well done, Steve.
Good job. That may have been one of the best you've done thus far. You did a great job.
Item 13.02, City Manager?
Yes, sir. Same deal.
I'll move it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And Commissioners, Wayne was kind enough to travel with me over to FDOT District III office a couple of weeks ago, and we had a really great meeting. They bought in their top brass there. The intention was simply to say, you know, we are partners in this, and that we need our fair share, and that our community should not be in any way penalized because taxpayers step up through blueprint through 2000 and pay for many of these projects that, that we want to work with them to leverage our resources with what they may have available. And I think it went really well, and when the new secretary is appointed, we'll do the same when that person's been named. Commissioners, we're now on item 13.03. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
I would move approval.
Yep, second it.
There's a, a motion and a second for approval. Commissioners, I believe this item just brings us into compliance with what the current operating procedure is with regard to this organization. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Man, y'all are moving at warp speed. Commissioners, we're now at the point of the meeting where we will hear from unagended speakers.
Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers unagended. The first is Harry Brown, and he'll be followed by Richard Dusenberry. Mr. Brown and Mr. Dusenberry, as with our speakers on agendated items, will have three minutes for their remarks, and you may begin. items, will have three minutes for their remarks, and you may begin.
It's changed from over the years, right? Still three minutes?
Still three minutes.
Okay.
If you give your name and address, that'd be great, and I'll start it when you start.
I'm here to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. I am Harry Brown. I reside at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee. My motivation for speaking tonight is to let the community and you know how any family member coming to work for the city is subject to be treated. They may be treated in a disparaging and disrespectful manner, as I was treated by Lou Shelley when he referred to me as a boy. And if you refer to me as a boy, you refer to Gillum, you refer to Curtis. Also, when you refer to one, you refer to all. He was a co-conspirator, this is Lou now, he was a co-conspirator with Anita Faivers when they failed to pay me my severance pay. Lou stated, Harry, everyone else got their severance pay, even the ones who sent out, as you were. They did not pay my legal fees either, when they called themselves selling out of court. Lou, you stated, Anita tried to take all your... What's the noise? Why the noise?
Please, continue.
Okay. You also stated, we know what they are trying to do to you, Harry, but I suggest to you that you do not commit a crime against the city, because if you do, you will lose everything you ever worked for. You even pointed me to legal counsel. According to policy, I should have been paid my severance without contention. Now, Anita's son stayed incarcerated for seven and a half years, and when he was released, she and Rick Fernandez placed him in a $60,000-a-year job. That is the reason she fought so hard to have the felony box banned from the city applications. She took my money, but placed her son in a $60,000-a-year job. Look at her life now. So be careful how you treat God's anointed. Tom Cole even had two of his sons placed in the fire department. Isn't that nepotism? Don't you have policy against nepotism? That should not be. The administrators here in this city seem to use the government for their own self-aggrandizement. It needs to stop, people. You should treat us all the same. Treat us with equality. Now, Rick, I talked to you, I called you to let you know that I wanted to talk to you. That was back in February. You haven't called me yet, and you told me tonight you're not going to call me.
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
Didn't treat anybody?
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown? Mr. Dusenberry?
My name is Richard Dusenberry. I live at 439 West Georgia Street. The topic tonight is, that I want to talk about, is racial segregation and discrimination in Tallahassee, and the focus is on Frenchtown Springfield, which is 58% black with 57% of households and 67% of individuals living below the poverty level. That's 2015 statistics. I have stewed over this, and my objective is simply to kind of get this out and make it a public document, and then I hope I can have some peace in my own mind about it. The Fair Housing Act of 1968 is violated if tax credit funded below-market housing is concentrated in low-income minority neighborhoods. That is a racially disparate effect, and there exists a policy of granting those tax credits that produces the concentration. That's U.S. Supreme Court 2015. Housing discrimination occurs in this case because anyone eligible for such housing may exercise their right only by living in a low-income minority neighborhood. This is segregating, for one thing, and it also violates the purpose for which HUD intends this housing to serve. Mr. Shelley's legal opinion states, "Decision of a private corporation to locate a housing development in a specified area of the city is outside the subject matter jurisdiction of the city's Fair Housing Code." I urge that the city has an obligation to sanction racial discrimination due to disparate impact, and even though Mr. Shelley argues otherwise, city is complicit in concentrating tax credit subsidized housing in historic Frenchtown Springfield, namely Goodbred Hills and Cassanas Village, under construction. This concentration is economically segregating, and it is almost certainly racially discriminating in housing under the Fair Housing Act of 1968. Please amend the Tallahassee Fair Housing Code to sanction housing discrimination due to disparate impact. It is illegal under the Fair Housing Act of 1968. I note regarding the developer of Cassanas House, that the recent city audit is highly critical of the Frenchtown Big Ben CDC, and the Miami Herald reported that Pinnacle faces a five-year funding ban by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. In addition to this script, I ask that two items be included in the public record of this committee meeting. One is Mr. Shelley's legal opinion, and the other is a description of the economic causes of racial segregation, as well as the effects of such segregation on the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any additional speakers?
No additional speakers.
Seeing none, sharing of ideas, Commissioners. Commissioner Ziffer?
Yeah, it's actually a request from the city attorney, because we never did it. I would love to have the presentation that was promised by, I think the police chief was supposed to do it, back in December on bar hours, on the impact of the hourly change. We agreed that we would have a follow-up by the police chief, and we never had that. And I'd like to know where that is. So I know that our next couple of meetings, we have budgets, so maybe in August, the chief could present something to us. Well, we're not here in August, are we? First meeting in...
First meeting in September.
September, that'd be right.
Included on the 28th budget.
Could be. Let's see what we could do, because it's long overdue. I know that there was a presentation promise. I'd like to see that.
June 28 or July 19, whichever one you prefer.
July 19.
Okay.
I had a question about that, too. I thought that we had a meeting at some point where we moved it back to three.
We did.
So did we move it back to three? Could somebody research that?
I will certainly check on that. I know we voted it originally for four.
Right, but then we brought it back up, I thought, and I thought we moved it back to three.
Then we were going to have more follow-up, and the chief, I know, didn't want to do it when we originally questioned it, because the students weren't here. Any one of them would come back in the fall during football season and then have accurate numbers.
That's right. You're right, it's summer.
Or at the end of June.
You've got plenty of time.
Got it. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other sharing of ideas? Commissioner Miller?
Well, a couple things. First of all, I wanted to give a shout-out to the folks from Second Harvest, because last week, Virginia Glass, Rick Minor, Gigi Rolini and her board put on a luncheon fundraiser to raise money for kids who are basically hungered, insecure, food insecure, that are basically don't know where their food is going to be coming from in the summer. It's amazing how many people this affects in our, how many households it affects in our community, and how many children. So I just wanted to share that. It was a wonderful effort, very, a great deal of help, I think, was received through that effort. But the fact is that we all need to address this and make sure these kids are taken care of for the summer. So, support for Second Harvest. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was that all good things come to an end, and so as of Monday, our lunchtime trolley will come to an end. We are going to sit back and analyze the numbers, determine what, when, and if, you know, it should run next year, for sure. It'll be legislative session, but how much in the fall, and so on. Especially since we're in budgeting, we're going to have a talk about that. But with your direction, we are continuing it through the Friday and Saturday night trolley. The tea at night is continuing, and it'll continue to run from 4:30 to 1 o'clock in the morning, every Friday and Saturday night, till, until. So I wanted to share that, and hopefully, we'll get that lunchtime trolley back someday soon, but it will be suspended for sure over the summer. Finally, I wanted to tell you all that I'm sorry that I won't be able to share this dias with you on the 28th of June, but I will be joining you on the telephone. So I'll see you in a month, essentially. I know I'll see you before then, but I just wanted to let you know that you better act responsibly, or they'll be hell to pay whenever I get mad.
Point well taken. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since May of this year, two Tallahassee Leon County citizens have distinguished themselves by successfully climbing and ultimately summiting the highest mountain on the European continent. Mount Elbrus is the highest mountain in Russia and in Europe, and is located in the Kakassas Mountains in southern Russia. I think I'm saying that right. The summit of the mountain is 18,510 feet, if you can imagine. On May 6 of this year, Jeremy Rogers, a City of Tallahassee firefighter, currently serving in Fire Prevention Division, successfully and safely climbed to the top of Mount Elbrus. And on June 2, 2017, James Adam Shelley, a Leon High School Go Big Red graduate and Florida State graduate, made it to the top of Mount Elbrus after waiting for a break in the weather for several days at 15,000 feet. The weather at the summit on June 2 was minus 20 degrees with 30 mile-per-hour winds. Shelley's Russian guide reportedly played "The Best Day of My Life" from the American Authors that Adam plays with, on his cellphone while they were climbing the last 30 feet to the top. While it is obvious that Adam Shelley gets both his creative and athletic endeavors and prowess from his mother Linda.
Really?
Perhaps his father Lou had something to do with it, as he still hikes to this day. Both of these men have achieved a lifetime goal of climbing to the summit of one of the tallest mountains on seven continents. They've now climbed three of the seven tallest mountains. So I wanted to recognize two Tallahasians that have achieved greatness and wish them luck in their future endeavors.
Absolutely.
Here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, you can ask.
Do they remember meeting any Russians and how many meetings they had with them?
Did they report them?
Report them, sorry.
My son did report that the Russian people were very kind and considerate and friendly to him. And I want to say to Jeremy, who's one of our firefighters, he has set up a program, an outdoor program for underprivileged youth, to get them outdoors, to do hiking trips, and he is certainly a credit to the city and the community.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
Great, awesome. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other sharing of ideas?
Mayor, if I could take just one second to remind the Commissioners, one of the pieces of legislation that passed this time was a piece of legislation that dealt with TNCs, Ubers, Lifts, other newer TNCs that are coming on the market. As part of that, the city and county governments around the state are now totally preempted, with a couple of exceptions, from regulating TNCs. So that our existing ordinance that tried to harmonize and to provide for a level playing field between taxis, other types of transportation company, and TNCs will be preempted as to the TNCs on July 1. The legislation has already been signed by the government. One of the areas that was not preempted, very narrow preemption, I mean, exception to the preemption, gives our airport the ability to still assess pickup fees against TNCs as long as they are uniform with taxis and other transportation. I have already been working with the airport administration, and we will do an amendment to our ordinance so that we will be able to avail the city and the airport of the pickup fees under that narrow exception. What remains, however, after July 1 is our existing ordinance, which will no longer be applicable to Uber and Lyft and other TNCs. And we will still have an ordinance that significantly limits and penalizes if there are violations of the ordinance in terms of public safety issues, such as criminal history, such as insurance, such as driving history. And so, we emphasized, and I know all of you emphasized, when we passed the ordinance now, almost two years ago, the idea of a level playing field and creating a level playing field between the taxicabs and the TNCs. The state has, by this legislation and preemption, has taken away most of the requirements and all of the enforcement authority against the TNCs. So I'll be talking with you and with also representatives from our taxis and transportation companies about a revision of our underlying ordinance. And I think that we've got two competing issues. We continue, I would assume, and certainly you can voice to me if you feel otherwise, that we want to have, to the extent possible, a level playing field. But at the same time, we're concerned about public safety and those ordinance requirements that we've always put in place to promote public safety for vehicles for hire in this community. I just wanted to bring that topic to your attention, so as we go forward and we have discussions about that, if you have ideas about that, please talk with me, and I'll be interacting with representatives from the taxicabs and the transportation hire vehicles as we move forward and work on an amendment to our existing ordinance.
Thank you for the update, City Attorney. Commissioners, if there's nothing further, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Travel safe.
All right.
Fast enough for you?
Yeah.
Where'd he go?